Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Grue. Mr. Cobb?
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please feel free to do so. Father, thank you for the wonderful blessings you bestowed on us in 2015. And thank you for watching over this city for the entire year. We ask that you continue the blessings and to continue to watch over and provide for this community in this new year of 2016. We also ask that you be with the Ola family and the loss of our former mayor, Mr. Leon Ola, and that you give them peace and comfort in this time that they need it most. And we ask that you be with us tonight. We ask that you grant this council wisdom as they lead us into this new year. And we ask that you send us all home safely to our families. Amen.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian, I think we all went off our condolences. Uh, best two, three, or possibly. Thank you.
All righty. This time we'll call the meeting to order. It is approximately 6:31 PM. We have all members of council present. We have no ceremonial items tonight, Mr. Cobb?
Uh, no, sir.
Am I reading the agenda correctly?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Next item up is the approval of the minutes for our December 7th meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is where the public can address the council on any item not on our agenda or any item that does not have a public comment portion. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to do so at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight are items number four through 13. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hankin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Hankin?
Nope, just some minor stuff, concrete, mundane.
You're welcome. Councilman Schenk? Deputy Mayor, excuse me. Don't worry, I'll get that right in September. No worries.
Just in time to pass.
Ask Councilwoman, I mean Deputy Mayor Drago.
I agree with the Councilman Hankin. The front three stuff.
Good. All righty. Anybody else? Councilman Britton? Councilman? All righty. Motion on table is to adopt the consent agenda, item four through 13. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 14, public hearings. We have none. Fifteen first reading of ordinances, we have none. Going to move right along to resolution number 3129-16. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to adopt Site Development Order number 455-16 for the Strand Development. The proposed development is located on the south side of Center Lake Lane and the west side of Oviedo Boulevard. The total land area is 9.11 acres. On October the 5th, the City Council adopted resolution number 3082-15, approving Site Development Order number 452-15. This was for a subdivision plan for lots 3B and 4 of the, of Oviedo on the Park, and it was also a site plan for Lot A. This Site Development Order approves a mixed-use development consisting of 246 dwelling units and 10,358 square feet of office use on the Lot A. The, the original plan that was approved back in October approved a maximum of 248 dwelling units and 11,868 square feet of office space. So this new plan does provide for an increase in both dwelling units and square feet of office. One of the conditions that the staff has proposed in the Site Development Order is that the, the original plan be amended prior to any construction. The proposal, the proposed plan also contains various deviations. One, some of the deviations are to the provision of street trees. As our staff's recommendation, that the mitigative techniques that are provided as far as the planting of large trees and then payment into the city's tree bank for the required trees is sufficient mitigation for these deviations. Also, the deviations reflect the, the approved design, hardscape, landscape design of City Plaza Way and Center Lake Lane. What it does is that it provides for similar, almost the same type of landscaping and hardscaping for those areas. There are also some architectural deviations that are requested. These deviations are because our land development code basically provides for one style of development. And as you have set as land use administrators and worked with this applicant on the design of these buildings, these buildings don't necessarily fit into that single mold. And so the deviations are reflective of what you and the applicant have worked together on to come up with the architectural design for these buildings. And all of these things have been memorialized into the Site Development Order. And therefore, it is recommended that City Council adopt resolution number 3129-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant here? Mr. Kavanaugh, good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No. I think it's summarized quite nicely. I'm here to answer any and all questions.
Is it fair to say that the last four meetings we've had on this, that this, as Mr. Cobb said, is really memorializing everything we've already gone over?
Yes. It's been quite a lengthy process.
We like lengthy processes. Any questions from Mr. Kavanaugh from the council?
No, sir.
If we have any, we'll call you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no request to speak forums on this item. I will, however, open it up. Anybody have anything they'd like to say on resolution 3129-16? Hearing none, we will close public comments. What is the pleasure of council?
Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt, I'm sorry. Uh, 3129-16.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Schenk, you have the floor.
Um...
Excuse me. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
As the mayor said, you know...
Can somebody like put that right over here?
He's got a big arrow.
Yeah, a little arrow.
The, well, you probably, since it was pointing there, you'd probably still keep pointing there.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, as the mayor pointed out, I think a lot of it is memorialized in here, and I appreciate that, that the time and effort, A, that you, the design team, put into it over the past months, coming in, listening to us, responding to the requests, the questions, and presenting us with the ideas and having them fit in. And it's, yeah, a lot of the deviations, you look at every one of the deviations, almost every one of them is related to windows. Again, it's apartment versus, the code is written differently for a different style. It's the number of glass panes that are supposed to be on sides, things like that, that don't relate specifically to apartments or townhomes, things like that. So that's great. It's not really, the deviations aren't anything that we weren't aware of or didn't see and understand ahead of time. The other thing is, it's kind of funny. I've been going through lots of paperwork, as everybody knows, moving and getting through stuff, and I came upon the original design from 2003 and all the original paperwork of Oviedo on the Park and the design. And if you look back, you'll see it's following pretty squarely the original design that was developed, you know, after years of citizens' input and throughput and the vote that went out for the bond issue. It pretty much lines up almost exactly the current picture with the picture that's out there, and the next picture that we're looking at in the next development lines up squarely with what was said there. And it's leading to those things that in, you know, 1999, 2000, 2001 and 2 were said, that, you know, when this starts building, the historic downtown, A, the roadway was going to be widened since then, but it will also lead to the redevelopment and the rebuilding of the historic downtown, and we see that happening. So it's kind of funny to see this paperwork and look at it and see that things 15 years ago, that, again, I wasn't on council, I think just the mayor was, you know, that many people put time and effort...
I just throw that in there, didn't you?
Well, you know, you were the only one. You know, the four of us were near us. There's others and many, many people who sat down as part of these committees and charrettes, et cetera, had put countless, as we talked about previously, hundreds and almost thousands probably of hours into, um, it's not only coming to fruition, they painted a picture and put in time and effort to design things that actually have withstood the test of time to come forth. So I appreciate, A, that you've helped to move that forward, and your designers, who were there from the beginning, some of them, et cetera, you know, other original designs have helped keep those design and those ideas moving forward. So I appreciate that. The only thing I'll, you know, make sure we know, and I'm going to say that all three because I don't know exactly which ones it relates to, is that somewhere in there, it does relate to the signage, that we're working on a sign package also, that all the signage that you see in there is contingent upon the sign package that comes forth next. So although it does look, I'll say, correct, that all the sign stuff is, relates to when we come forth with a sign package and we work that out, the exacts of that. But, again, I appreciate it. And like I said, I know I went on for a few minutes, but it was just very interesting seeing the documents and going through them. And like I said, you've been here since, you know, the beginning of those times and the designs, and it's held forth throughout.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman, anything to add?
I think that was beautifully said, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kavanaugh, you've done a great job up to this point. I have no doubt it's going to be beautiful, just like everything else that is there. And I do appreciate you always trying to accommodate us in making the changes that we've asked for, you know, no matter how small or big. You were great to work with, so thank you so much.
Councilman Britton, anything?
Nope, I think that sums it up, or to this phase as well as the...
Councilman Hankin?
Yeah, I just want to echo Tom. I think Councilwoman Drago hit it good. You know, you've really worked with us. We've, lack of a better word, kind of always beat you up on stuff, but I think these buildings out here, I think people are really going to like them. And we also have to remember the big picture. This was a, a project that the voters voted for. This is their park. This wasn't a, you know, a council said, let's throw all this out there. You know, we put out a, you know, vision. You guys wanted or not, it was voted by the people. And now it's coming out better than expected, I think. I'm really looking forward to seeing these two new buildings. I think people are going to be, they're going to get the wow factor of them. You know, they're so unique and different than what's out there, and that's what we like about that. So, you know, the big vision is starting to really come together. Waiting on those restaurants. I know you got them in the bag. So when they can come, it'll even be better. But thank you for everything. Chris, I know you did a lot of hard work on it, too. So they look good, and on we go. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, on all three items that are coming up, I mean, I'll be, I'll try not to be redundant, but, you know, everything is all starting to come together now. And sitting up here and having seen it from the beginning, I mean, there's only four or five of us in the room right now who've been here from the absolute beginning of this. And remembering those meetings here with 60 or 70 people, to actually seeing it come out of the ground, to actually now see Phase Two coming into the works with the mixed use as it was all envisioned is exciting. And I think Deputy Mayor made a great point that gets lost all the time, well, not necessarily lost, lost sometimes to certain people, that this is going to be the impetus through the CRA to be the redevelopment dollars for the historic downtown. I mean, this, this is, this is so in its infancy right now, which we're all seeing happening. I mean, it'll all move up, Oviedo Boulevard, it'll all move up 434. The state's in the process of getting ready to start Phase One of the road improvements, and once the road improvements are done, the redevelopment dollars from the CRA can start to be poured back into this rectangular district of essentially Oviedo Boulevard, 434, Mitchell Hammock and Magnolia. So it's quite exciting. And then at our last meeting, we found out, we even have a few dollars, and they think in the CRA fund, don't we, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Was it 500 or 1,000?
Something like that.
Yeah. Well, that's okay. It's on a positive note after the economic downturn. So it really is moving in the right direction, and it is quite exciting what's going to pop up out of the ground. But Dr. Correa, if I could just ask you a question, if you don't mind? How are you tonight?
Been fine, thank you.
I, I just have a question to ask you, and it's not to put you on the spot, it's honest opinion. You know, I was the one who, I'm a little concerned about the design of these buildings. I, I think they're beautiful. I'm just concerned how they're going to fit in. And I know you, your entire staff have done an incredible job working with Tom and the designers. Am I being overprotective? And if I am, feel free to tell me. I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I think it's a different style than what we have right now, right, in the Park Place Apartments. But I think it's a good design. It's just a different, it's more modern, and other cities are being also having the same kind of trends, more modern, Winter Park. We have a lot of new development in Winter Park that you have more straight-line type of design, more modern architecture. That is what it is. I mean, there is no bad or good. It's just a different design. I tend to like more in architecture, so I'm comfortable with that.
You're the professional, I am not. I just wanted to ask the question. Any other questions, Dr. Correa?
This, just so I'm, you know, 100% aware, I looked through everything, you kind of, again, you have five eyes looking at what we talked about. This is exactly as planned, presented, everything that we were talking about in those five, four meetings previously. This lines up...
The work session.
Oh, I know it does, but I just want to make sure that, you know, it's out there. We've sat through four meetings, and again, our eyes are looking at it, but it's a lot of moving parts that you guys, again, and I didn't thank you guys, and none of us did. You guys did a tremendous job making sure that what we talk about in these meetings are then replicated in the designs and made sure the follow-up. So just to ask the question once on all three, that, you know, it is exactly as we went through and presented this.
It reflects what we discussed in the work session, yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone? No. Chris, can I ask you a question? How are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you.
Excellent, I'm great. Well, as one of us from the very beginning, who have, well, first of all, your firm is nationally known, your architecture, design, everything that you do is just impeccable. What's out there right now is all of you and your team and your heart and soul into it, and it's come out beautiful. Just describe this mixing now that we're going to have, or I know how it's going to look, and I know nothing's changed, and I'm just, would like you, from looking at developments all over the country, you know, just give us that 50,000-square-foot vision of what's going on out there.
Okay. Um, I mean, I think what you're going to see is the development of a really great new town center. All of us have established the block structure and the correct setbacks and great streets and great finishes. Everything's in place to really put, to really make a great place for living for Oviedo. I am frankly proud and so happy to have been a part of it. I think it's going to be beautiful, I really do. I like the mixture of architecture, as Dr. Correa tested, too. The architecture actually is going to tie to the park in really wonderful ways. You're going to see some similarities and some pops, and it's going to make it a little bit eclectic and real. And, you know, when you go, when you go to a real place, walk down the street, you see different textures, you see different architecture, you know, there's different things happening. And as Oviedo on the Park develops, it's going to be a real village town center, and that's what's exciting.
Great. Well, I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions?
Just the formality, can you give your name and address? So Barbara will have an address.
Yes, Christina Height, 433 West New England Avenue, Winter Park.
I just assumed Barbara knew that by now, but...
It has changed recently, so that's my new address.
Thank you, Chris.
All right.
Any other questions from the council?
Nope, but complimentary, Chris, a ditto, those are proud of what you do.
All righty. The motion on the table is to adopt resolution 3129-16. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 17, it's resolution number 3130-16. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for City Council to approve Site Development Order number 457-16. This is the final engineering for the extension of Mike Robert Way eastward to Oviedo Boulevard, and also for the construction of Center Lake Lane, which is a north-south roadway that will extend from Mitchell Hammock Road up to Center Lake Lane. As we mentioned earlier, the City Council did approve resolution 3082-15, approving a subdivision plan for lots 3 and 3B and 4 of Oviedo on the Park. Those plans did incorporate the preliminary designs for these two roadways. This Site Development Order provides for the final engineering of these two roadways. And there are a few street tree deviations that are requested, and as with before, the deviation, the mitigative techniques that are recommended as far as the use of large trees and the payment into the city's tree bank are good mitigative techniques to accommodate the proposed deviations. It's recommended that the City Council adopt resolution number 3130-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Applicant have anything to add? Mr. Kavanaugh, do you have anything to add?
I do.
Okay. I have no request to speak forums from the public, but as always, I do give everyone a chance. Anybody like to address the council on this item? Come on up. Name and address for the record, Bob.
Bob White, 1929, Crystal Downs Court. I have one point to make and one question. One point to make is, I saw the design, and there appears to be a lot of parking in there, but as all those cars in that area move out onto the main roads, I see a disaster, but I'm sure the traffic studies would not bear that out. This looks like, right now, it's very difficult to get down Mitchell Hammock through the two new lanes that are there, and that's without any traffic coming out of the park. I think it's only going to get worse, but I'll assume that the designers have that in mind. Last point is, one question I get from all homeowners that I talk to is, when's all this going to happen? You know, so far, I've seen no schedule, even on a monthly or an annual basis. And I think it would be good if the city would put out something, as we're at this stage in design, the development, the development orders, issuings, so on and so forth.
Okay. We'll get those answered for you. Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Hearing none, we will close the public comments and move on to the pleasure of council. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Hankin?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 3130-16.
Second.
Motion second. Councilman Hankin, anything?
No, this is just another piece. You know, as you, you know, as Oviedo on the Park grows, now you're seeing the transportation within it get better, you know? Another east-west road, another entrance from Mitchell Hammock heading up into it. Questions, Bob, that you brought, we'll get those answered. They're valid points, you know, we all think about them, but there's a lot of things in the works that will alleviate that, but I'm not sure how that's going to get addressed. Let the mayor handle that. But this is really good. This, this opens up more movement within there. So, you know, each time we do something like this, we get another piece of, you know, citizens' project, as I like to call it, that they voted for, done and complete. This is very important, so I'm happy this is happening.
Great. Who made the second? Councilman Britton?
Ditto, and just to kind of piggyback on your comment, Colonel, you've had all these meetings, and it's been noted that we are actually ahead of schedule for the long-term development of the property. I think it runs out into 2024 or something like that. And we're going into Phase Two a little bit early, so it seems like a long time, it seems like it's kind of taken a while, but we're really moving along like we planned all along.
Great. Anything else? Councilwoman, anything to add?
No, they said it all.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll try to do the traffic for you because you're going to do it, so I'll just try to get it for you.
Okay.
But, you know, double, I know tonight, if, on the consent agenda, there was a couple of things to help move the traffic through. They're going to be installing devices to help traffic motion on Mitchell Hammock, and with 426 widening, that'll also help. So it'll take, alleviate both of those ends of the traffic. 426 will alleviate a lot of Mitchell Hammock traffic, first of all, but the traffic signaling devices, that will also, it's going to cause a fair few problems at first when people get caught not looking at their phones and not being ready to go. That's the new problem that'll be found, because that's a new problem that's being found, is people aren't ready when the light now changes because they're used to waiting the 30 seconds, minute, whatever it is, they're going to be now go, oh, I got a green light, hear the horns behind them, so. But those two things are probably the biggest aspects that'll help with those traffic. And, you know, there's other ways out, onto 434 and through Boardwalk, et cetera. There'll be other entrances and ways to get out, we'll see. Otherwise, again, it's a beautiful interior roadway. I mean, it's really just an interior, you know, the interior roadways, they're gorgeous, being the brickway for the restaurant row, for the look of the retail, to have that look that way, I think it really is going to be striking. People are going to love that look and how good it looks and how upgrade and upscale it's going to be.
Thank you. Councilman Hankin?
Yeah, can I, you know, I'm glad Councilman did that, but I just, Colonel, I just wanted to kind of just tell you, because I live out on the east side, and, you know, the real goal is, it's going to take a little while to get there, but once 426 and 419 is widened, you know, everybody lives out on the east side, people in Chiliota, people that come from 50, the idea is then to continue straight on this new four-lane road, not make that left onto Lockwood, which you guys all use. And now you got two major four-lane east-west things. That's what's going to ultimately fix it. It's going to take a little while to get there. The adaptive traffic response, these lights that are not just time now, that are sensing traffic, all of that is good, but then, once that road gets widened, Oviedo's going to be good. You know, so that's the answer, really. Councilman hit on that pretty well.
And the toll booth at the end of 419 for Chiliota, just that we put a Chiliota so that all the cut through, everybody who lives east of us in Chiliota and North Orange and are coming this way and plowing through, we'll just put the toll booth there, and we'll cut that out immediately at that point, so.
Boy, if we put a toll up there, we'd have no budget problems ever. But, yeah, I mean, and just to piggyback on the traffic issue, I mean, that's not what we're here to discuss this evening, but, you know, way back in the early 2000s, when we did reams of traffic studies, and Mr. Cobb was here for all of them, I mean, there's literally a stack of traffic studies this tall that was studied before any of this was done, in order how we're going to move the traffic within the constraints we have. Bypasses were talked about around the city 30, 40 years ago, but different decisions were made, and that's, that's fine. The downtown merchants at the time wanted traffic coming through the old downtown, not going around the old downtown. I get it. But unfortunately, this is what it's left us. So the decision had to be made to fix it, because most of that traffic, especially that morning rush hour traffic, when they did the license plate studies years ago, and this was years ago, I can only imagine now, 30 to 40% of it wasn't our traffic. It's not Oviedo traffic. It's people coming from the east, coming from Avalon Park now, coming from south of Lockwood now, through our city, because if you all think about it, the only way to get to the Greenway is through Oviedo. So that's what necessitated the decisions 10 or 12 years ago to widen 419, 426. There's no other way, cars don't fly, so we'll get there. Getting back to the item at hand, Mr. Kavanaugh, if I could just ask a couple of... Kavanaugh, if I could just ask a couple of questions of you, or if you prefer, Chris, it's just as far, maybe yourself would be best. Thank you.
Sure.
Just name and address for Barbara, so she doesn't get nervous.
Tom Kavanaugh, 730 Bonnie Bray Street, Winter Park, Florida, 327-89.
As Councilman Schenck said, the restaurant row, which I think is called City Walk now, that's all brick, correct?
Correct.
And Mike Roberto Way is going to be built, just like the other streets essentially that are in there, with the angled parking or on-street parking.
Angle parking and the parking will, the parking stalls themselves will be brick, the street will be.
So it'll look just like everything that's out there.
Yes, yes.
Right now. We're just following that whole theme all the way through.
Yes.
And this infrastructure's going in with the development.
Concurrently.
Right. So it'll all be out there at one time. It's not going to be piecemealed in. When we see all the trucks out there constructing, everything's going in.
Absolutely.
The question was asked, what's your timeframe to get your construction going?
Depends a lot on the permitting process with the city, but tentatively, we will be moving dirt and starting construction out there probably late March, early April. We would anticipate the roads and the infrastructure will happen much quicker than the heavy lifting of the buildings. I would probably tell you we'll have all the roads in within a year. The buildings will probably follow another eight to nine months after that. So overall, from start of construction, you're probably looking at 17, 18 months. Roads, infrastructure, beautification process, signage, probably 12 months.
Early when?
Twelve months.
Quote.
Twelve months from start of construction, whenever we can obtain all the permits, but I am, I am hopeful that I will be through the process in, you know, March, early April, and we are, we are anxious. In the interim, I will bring it to everybody's attention, we are starting on Mike Roberto Way. I've been told that structures will be delivered tomorrow, and we're going to start digging this week, and that schedule is to be completed within a 60-day time horizon. And I also think you'll see Starbucks and Chipotle out there following that same time horizon. Their construction, start to finish, is probably five months, somewhere in that neighborhood.
And, Tom, the other million-dollar question, and I know you've, I don't want to say confided in us, but you've told us about your leasing activities going on out there. There still is many inquiries as ever?
Yes. If you're speaking about the retail side of the equation, it's, you know, we're into the build it and they will come scenario. I mean, we are really trying to make this easy for all, what I would call the remaining phase, which is the retail, the commercial phase, whatever you want to call it. But, yes, we're fielding calls on a daily basis. I, not to, not to give away the.
No, I, we understand we can't discuss who's, not asking you to.
We're, we're fine, and we'll, we will rededicate our efforts, and you'll see some progress there very shortly.
Alrighty. Any other questions from Mr. Kavanaugh? No? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'm just going to close with one item. You know, we're talking about Mike Roberto Way, and there's a lot of us in the room who know who Mike Roberto was. And, you know, Tom, it was very gracious of you when we were naming all these streets to allow that road to be named after Mike. And for those of you who don't know who Mike was, Mike was with the original consulting team, Wade Trim, back in 2001, was it, Brian?
2000.
2000. And Mike did all the heavy lifting on the early phases of this project, because you were dealing with multiple property owners, you were dealing with charrettes of citizens, and unfortunately, Mike isn't here with us today to see the fruits of those labors. But knowing Mike, I know he's up there looking down on us, and he's proud, because he saw the vision right from the get-go, and mapped it out, laid it out, and spent, gosh, it felt like a lifetime with us. But, you know, that, that's, that road really is something special, so we do appreciate you naming that after him. So, with that being said, is there anything else for the good of the order? No? Then I'm going to call the question. The motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 31, 3130-16. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to Resolution 3131-16, Site Development Order 456-16. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for Council to approve Site Development Order Number 456-16 and Architectural Design Order Number 002-16. This is the Strand Two Development. This is formerly known as the Park Place Apartments Phase Two Mixed-Use Building. This is the reconfiguration of what we all know as the L-shaped building that is located on the east side of City Plaza Way and the south side of Center Lake Lane, from the prior architecture to now the new architecture that was, that is the same architecture that is being used in the Strand Development over on Oviedo Boulevard. The City Council did originally approve these buildings in 2004. This is a revision of the original approval. The applicant proposes to construct a four-story high-mixed-use building with 31 apartment units and 15,103 square feet of retail and restaurant use on 1.56 acres. There is also a part of the extension of Mike Roberto Way. Residential units are going to be located on the ground floor of the building along Center Lake Lane and above the retail on City Plaza. The parking will be located interior to the lot. There is a total of 77 parking spaces. There are some, the primary changes to the Site Development Order are that the building facing Center Lake Lane has been changed from four to three stories and from 10 to nine residential units. One of the stairwells facing the rear east facade has been removed, reducing the number from four to three. And then the materials, the geometry, and the colors of all the facades have been changed to mimic the Strand Development, which was on the City Council agenda earlier. There are some deviations that are included with this, and once again, those deviations are to accommodate this design. This design does not necessarily fit into the, the, what is the, what the Land Development Code, the one type of development that the Land Development Code provides for, but these will, these accommodate the design to bring forward. That's part of the Strand Development. It's recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 3131-16.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Kavanaugh, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
Alrighty. Moving along, no public comment forms, but I will give everybody a chance. Anybody want to address council? Hearing none, close public comment, and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt 3131-16.
Second.
Motion second. Counselman, Deputy Mayor Schenck, you have the floor?
I think we've spoken. Again, the only thing I'll add is, forget about the signage, that I know it's in there somewhere, but that the signage, any signage that's on there will be forthcoming with a sign agreement.
Great. Counselman Britton?
Good.
Counselman Heck?
It's fine.
Counselwoman?
Good.
Alrighty. I think we've kind of gone over everything. This building was already once approved, so now we're just changing the way it looks.
Bunch of work sessions.
Bunch of work sessions.
Bunch of work sessions.
Alright, so that being said, I will call the question. The motion on table, excuse me, I'm sorry, before I call the question, anything from anybody else? Nope, Mr. Cobb, anything?
No, sir.
Alrighty. Call the question. Motion on table is to adopt Resolution 3131-16. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty. Mr. Kavanaugh, go build a project.
Thank you. Once again, happy new year.
Same to you, thank you.
Happy new year to you, too.
Alrighty. Next item is the discussion items, the annual appointment and reapportment to the city boards for the city council members. Everybody currently has roles. Is everybody happy with their roles? Anybody want to change their role?
I'm good.
Alton Heck? Alrighty. I, I would, I would like to suggest that we give Counselman Heck and Friends of Lake Jessup though. What do you think?
That'd be perfect, Jess.
No, I'm like, all righty. Everyone's good?
They're doing a great job on that. It is a little clear driving over that bridge. Keep up the good work.
Alrighty. So, Mr. Cobb, do you just want consensus, the council, keep the appointments the same?
Consensus is fine.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Alrighty. Mr. Cobb, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to 2016. There's a lot of interesting and challenging initiatives that we have coming up, and it's exciting. Some of the things we're going to be working on, so just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Groot, do you have anything for us tonight?
Ditto.
We like ditto. Counselman Heck, and are we going to count on a ditto from you?
Do you want one?
No, go ahead.
I just, I just want to say, you know, December was an amazing month in the city, and thank Drew and Chief Chudnow and Chief White and everybody for keeping the city in good shape. You know, there's a lot of things going on out there, but all the different celebrations and the new tree and the fire, Santa on the fire engine and just everything. I mean, you guys worked very hard in December, you know, the 12 days of Christmas, all these things that you guys, you know, were doing for the residents is good. And Chief Chudnow, you know, we all see those reports, you know, our troops are doing a good job keeping Oviedo very safe. There's a lot of, a lot of things happening out there that you never see, but thank them as well, and the Fire Department for, you know, taking everybody who ate too much to the hospital and all of that stuff. So you guys did good, Brian, your staff, bang-up job. So 2016, here we are. It's a little depressing getting back to work today, but we're all, we all did it, and now the machine's revved up and we're ready to go. So, that's all I got.
Alrighty. Counselwoman?
First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. This is, this is an amazing city, I have to say, just going through the holidays and going through the park, and every night something was going on, almost it seemed. It was just a really fun city to be in. I was very proud to be part of all this, and I want to thank everyone who worked so hard to make that a reality and for, you know, what we're, what the city has done and all the residents. You all make it what it is today, so thank you, and I know 2016 is going to be a good year, Brian.
It is. Alrighty. Counselman Britton?
Just real quick, I just want to ditto Happy New Year to everyone, and just an observation from, from back in December, on just really how big the heart of the people of this city are. I got a call in mid-December from Pastor Murphy from Harvest Time International, telling me about a, a military family that had a loss of the breadwinner, the retired veteran, and was in need of some help, and it, he asked me if I could look into it, and really, all it took was just me mentioning it to people in casual conversation, and as you know, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, we, we were able to get a Christmas package for them for their Christmas dinner, and folks were bringing gift cards over. The American Legion stepped up and is helping them, so just another example of the charity we have in this city. It's something to be very proud of. And along those lines, we did get an email that, speaking of charity, Home Depot has stepped up and is going to, I believe, on January 16th, go into the American Legion post over there by Oviedo High and renovate it for them free of charge. So we're, I'm going to stop by and congratulate them and thank Home Depot folks for their, their efforts.
Is that the 16th or the 15th?
I, I think it's the Saturday. I'm not sure what day that is.
Oh, okay, then that would be the 16th.
I believe it's the Friday.
Is it the Friday?
It's the Friday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's Friday.
I was just going by.
It is the Friday, right, Brian?
Yes, sir, I believe it is. It's the 15th.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because they haven't, they invited us out for the luncheon, ribbon cutting or something.
Yeah, it's Friday. So, that's it.
Great. That's it? Well, I'll just, I'll piggyback on everything. I mean, staff, incredible for December. The Santa tracker was a huge hit this year. Everyone got to follow where Santa was. That app was, app or GIS, however we did it, Brian, the IT team was awesome and on, completely on top of that. Keith, as far as the dinners, you know, we have to thank Little John Engineering for that. I mean, they were the ones who stepped up with the dollars, not only this year for that meal, but the meals that we provide to the firehouses and the police department on Christmas Eve. So, you know, thanks to John Jones and the whole team at Little John Engineering for providing the dollars to us to go out there and do that this year. Obviously, it's 2016, and the future is bright here in Oviedo. There are so many things that are going to be coming our way this year, so many great things that are going to be coming this way, our way, so many projects we've been waiting to start to make things better, that road improvements that we're going to see this year, so it is going to be quite exciting. As was mentioned earlier, former mayor and city barber Leon Oliff passed away on January 1. Forty years, I read, as the local barber, six years as our mayor, and Leon's back there on the wall. One, two, three, four. He's four, four in from the left on the top, and it was always fun speaking with him and hearing the stories about the parade that came through town and didn't stop the only traffic light we had, and he had to call up the commander and raise heck. But, you know, he was mayor when the, it was a smaller town and a simpler town back in the day, but he'll be missed seeing him, just seeing him around. He and his wife, even in, at their advanced age, would come out for different events that they could make it to, and it, he thankfully lived very long, and I'm sure fruitful life, so just keep him, him and his family in your prayers. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Yeah, I echo. So Drew's now in here. We've given a lot of praise, Drew, for the, and the parks, and all your guys at Parks, you know, for the job they did over December. Everybody echoed that, that it was a wonderful job. All the facilities that had all the different events, you know, you went from dog parks with Santa to swimming with Santa. I personally missed that one, but, you know, that's a, you know, that.
It was a little chilly for that swimming with Santa that day.
You hit the whole range. You hit the whole range of activities that could be out there, and they were all very good. So thank you and staff. They did a tremendous job. Again, Lars and the fire staff who volunteered their time to, you know, decorate a truck, put a lot of effort into things, and it's such a wonderful event, Santa driving around, so thanks to that. And chief, we've got Cops and Cars coming up on the 23rd. Everybody should come attend that. It's a one, always been a great event, very exciting with all the, A, the cars alone. If you're not, you know, if you're not there for the cars right alone, that's okay to just see the cars, but then helicopter, other things are going on. I'm always usually there. It tends to, timing-wise, I don't know, but seeing the firefighters cut the top of the car off and, you know, see their events, too, so you get a lot of different things and see how people, you know, our public safety works.
Chief, that's the 23rd, right? Saturday, 23rd?
23rd, Saturday, 23rd.
Okay. Like 10 to 4 or something usually?
Nine to 4.
Nine to 4, okay.
Include them all.
Yep.
Yep. And, you know, thanks to staff, and especially the, the events people that helped put together all the stuff. The luncheon was wonderful again this year. So those people who put a lot of time in all year long for the events again and again and again, to celebrate things, you know, they really need to be commended. And we've got, this Saturday is the prayer breakfast with OCIA from MLK Day. That's it, sir.
That's this Saturday?
Isn't it this Saturday?
Yeah, so is the 5K.
Yeah.
Hmm. For some reason, oh, might be in my other calendar. Alrighty, let's make sure. Alrighty. Well, with all that being said, is there anything else for the good of your order, Mr. Cobb? Staff, anything for us?
No, sir, Mayor.
Council?
Good.
Alrighty, we have future meeting dates. Just like to ask if there's consensus of council and staff. The Tuesday, January 19th meeting, is there any way to make that Wednesday, January 20, Mr. Cobb? There is like four events going on on Tuesday, the 19th. The Historical Society's having their event. It just, a lot of things fell on that night. Is there any reason why we couldn't?
I don't see why we can't.
Everybody got their calendars? They could take a quick look?
What date was that, sir?
Wednesday, the 20, instead of Tuesday, the 19. We can't have it Monday, the 18, because of Martin Luther King Day. Keith, you good on that night?
Are we talking January or February?
January, yeah. Next meeting.
I thought that was President's Day. When's President's Day? Is that February?
That's February.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
We got to get that day off, too?
You can have that day off.
Okay.
Alrighty, so future meeting dates will be Wednesday, January 20th, at 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall. That is, that is a change, so everybody just take note of that. Monday, February 1st, 2016, 6:30 PM. Monday, February 15th, 6:30 PM. Those are all regular sessions here at City Hall. With that being said, it is just before 7:20. We're adjourned.